To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman and members of the audience, can you please be made standing for one moment, please? We have a moment of silence this evening for a power in our system. Paula Kirk, a moment of silence for the nerve, please. Thank you. May she rest in peace.
Okay. We have the approval of minutes?
No, roll call.
Four?
Roll call. Yes.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, 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 sir. That's jumping on Joe. All right, go ahead.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Present.
Mr. Lipsett?
Here.
Mr. Morenne?
Present.
Dr. Wells?
Yeah, Mr. Kissel?
Here. All right. We want to do the approval of minutes for the 12523 school committee meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
I don't.
Excellent. All set. Going into...
And make a motion to suspend the regular order of business to go into executive session for the purposes of negotiation, collective bargaining, and oral litigation.
Second. Do we have a roll call?
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsett?
Yes.
Mr. Morenne?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes. All right. Step out for a few moments. Everyone can stay where they are if they want.
Oh, okay.
Are we going to go?
We're going to head into the... Uh, is public comment a couple of things I actually didn't say earlier. If you have Public Media. And, oh, and coming out of executive session, no votes were taken. We do have a little bit of a thing to say before public comment that all speakers shall have up to three minutes to speak. I read this the last meeting as well. All speakers must state their name and address in the specific matter on which they intend to speak about at the start of the public statement. Public comment shall be limited to items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities such as district educational goals, policies, budget, and the performances of the tenant. Under no circumstances should individuals use public comment to complain about staff or students. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. All remarks will be addressed to the chair of the school committee. The chair has the right to end a person's public comment time if the chair determines that the individual has failed to honor these guidelines or if the matter is not appropriate for public comment. That's it. So, we do have public comment. So, if anyone is interested in speaking, great.
But thanks for your part in getting kids back in school a couple of weeks ago. Mostly, just to echo what Barbara said, I was so impressed by how quickly the greater Woburn community came together to support our teachers, our students, and really the whole community through a difficult week. As we look in the coming weeks at drafting a budget that's going to carry us through the next year, I wanted to come here tonight and share my support for proposing twice-weekly PE for our elementary students. As many of you don't have students in elementary school, to familiarize you with the schedule, my kids have a two-week rotating schedule, so they have 10 different days that rotates every two weeks, which mean, and they have eight specials. So my kids in particular have five specials one week and three specials the next week, meaning that two days they have no specials. So there's a ton of research that supports increasing PE. Many of the surrounding towns already have PE twice a week. And our students need a daily break, our teachers need daily prep time, and so I continue to support increasing PE to twice weekly. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none. Right. Seeing none, I'd like to close public comment. In the audience this evening, we have City Council Liaison to the School Committee, Charles Viola. Any comments or anything? Okay, thank you. Also tonight, we have Brandon, the student representative to the school committee. So he's got a presentation.
So last week, the high school was able to complete both the science MCAS as well as the access testing. We would like to thank both Ms. Pertra as well as Ms. Pedrissi for all of the hard work and commitment to this task, particularly coming off a disrupted week. This past weekend, Ms. Camanio as well as Mr. Sullivan chaperoned 12 students to the Model Year One Conference at Boston University. All of the students had an unbelievable experience, and Luke Shelton brought an award back to Woburn. Congratulations to Luke and a thank you to Ms. Camanio as well as Mr. Sullivan for all your efforts and support this weekend. On February 13th, Ms. Pedrissi as well as Ms. Donovan hosted the Woburn's Dollars for Scholars mailing drive at the high school from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. Term three report cards went out last Friday, and once all grades are final in the high school honor roll and honor roll, our lists are complete. Mr. Martin will include them in the high school newsletter as well as send them to the Daily Times publication. Ms. Weber hosted a National Honor Society Gladiator Tournament this past weekend in the auditorium at the high school. This Wednesday and Thursday, February 15th and 16th, Ms. Tifo and Ms. Gustenhoven are hosting a STEM Week at Woburn High. The goal of this is to introduce all incoming ninth graders to the new classes and electives that will be offered in the fall in both science and the fine arts. The program runs from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. at the high school. On Friday, this Friday, the Interact Club will be hosting our annual dating game during periods six and seven in the auditorium. Proceeds will go to Dollars for Scholars. Tickets will be available through Thursday, February 16th, and they are being sold during all three launches. This year, Woburn High will be offering both educational as well as STEM scholarships for seniors during term four. Through the efforts of Ms. Pedrissi, we were able to acquire almost $100,000 in funding so that we can pay students who are interested in this opportunity. Mr. Martin will be sending out applications as well as a criteria for applying for these internship opportunities the week we return from February break. Additionally, we would like to extend our thanks to the custodians and lunch workers who are in the building during the extremely turbulent week as it was highly unexpected for their tremendous work, effort, and also dedication. Finally, students will be on February vacation from February 20th through the 24th, and schools will reopen on Monday, February 27th.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Does anyone have any questions for Brandon? Any comments?
Great job.
Thank you.
I was talking to Brandon beforehand, so I might explain you have the last track meet is Saturday?
Yeah, it's the states. Yeah.
Good job.
And what event will you be participating in?
The two mile.
Oh, distance guy. Good job.
Good luck. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right. A couple of comments, should have been around public comment. Received a lot of emails in the last couple of weeks at least, and all of those, it was actually way too many, but, not too many, but so many. They are on file. I don't have a stack here because it would literally be about 800 or so. So appreciate those emails if you were part of them. But also, a lot of the PE emails started coming, and I do want to just make a quick comment on that in the sense of that we have those on file as well. And working with the budget, which is coming up soon, we'll be looking at many things, including PE twice a week as one of the opportunities. And I think it's a great opportunity for our kids, and I'm not speaking as a whole committee and hopefully not showing my hand too early, but I think it's a great idea to have, and I think it's something we definitely will, I will advocate, push for, and I'm sure the committee might do the same, but we'll see what we can do with that.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the regular order of business and go to the ratification of the contract.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. Julie, just another moment. All right, so we have, did you stack these?
I did.
Oh, okay. I put all my stuff. And I guess that's it. All right, cool.
So Mr. Chairman, while you're getting those, you know, I know we're going to ratify the teachers and the parent contracts today, and I have to declare myself that I have a conflict.
Okay.
I don't have a teacher's relative, but my brother is the head baseball coach, and that salary is included in the contract, and my sister is a parent.
Okay. We have three, Barbara, the nurses, the parents, and the nurses, parents, and teachers. All right, just want to make sure. All right, cool. So I forget the process. We're just going to pass it around? Did you?
No, vote. Vote.
Oh, I thought we signed it, and that was the vote. Sorry. All right.
Make a motion to ratify the documents that are presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Collectively? Okay. All in favor? All right. Do a roll call?
Sure.
Sorry.
Collectively or individually?
I guess so, right?
No, because I can't.
Oh, that's it. They can't do it. So this is the, which one are we doing?
I'll make a motion to ratify the contract between the Woburn School Committee and the Woburn Teachers Association with regards to teaching.
Teachers.
Second.
Do a roll call for that.
Sure. Ms. Chisholm.
Epstein.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
Mava.
Dr. Wells.
Stan.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes. All right.
Does anyone have any questions on this that you wanted to clarify and question? All right. I'll make a motion to ratify the contract with regards to paraprofessionals in the Woburn School Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Stan.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to ratify the Woburn School Committee and the Woburn nurses.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes. Excellent.
Resolut.
Yeah, we've got two sets, three sets in. Which one is that?
And for clarification, we can sign it, we just couldn't vote on it.
Okay, that's fine.
So people don't think we.
So we'll sign it, and then Barbara, did you have other representatives from each group or just yourself? Okay. I'll get it at the end, and I'll sign it. I'll be Barbara here.
I don't want to get them confused.
Yeah, we should have written on the top.
All right.
You can sign them all anyway, though, you said, right?
Yeah, we can sign, yeah.
Maybe it's got lost. I have to sign it to it again, so.
Yeah.
His signature, as a lefty. So weird.
Of course, I have to sign.
No, I'll do it at the end. I'll make sure everyone signed it.
The teachers.
Thank you. Are they all back? To fall down while you're done?
Just while there's a break in the action, yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Locke and the WTA for your hard work and the collective bargaining process. Most appreciate it and appreciate all the staff that are here tonight, everything that everyone does every day for all kids. And so I really, the past month, I was, you know, it's been, it's been a challenge, and I'm looking forward to working together moving forward. So thank you very much. I've said that in this room before, and I recognize that public education is a lot different than it was even three or four or five years ago, so thank you.
I'll get them all, and I'll go. Lipsit, Barbara, I'll get them all here, and I'll bring them over. Make it easier for you. Did you get them? That's a smaller one, I think. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Each letter.
Remember that picture during COVID?
Yeah, up on the screen. Fire was remote.
No, they were never really.
Put the fancy signature.
Actually, can we borrow one more pen?
You can hold on to that pen now. Kelly needs to sign that. I think I need to sign that one. We both need to sign this one.
So we have double.
Yes, we've got the orange one.
That one's complete, then. Nurses as well. Okay. And this, this. I don't know why I overwrote it on the top. This is teachers. Oh, excuse me, this is parents.
Where's the other parents? That's signed, all right.
All set.
Other parents. Oh, so you did this one.
This is teachers. This is parents. This is also teachers. It was a joke, yes.
So I need, you said it was parents. Yeah. Yeah.
Excuse me.
A couple, a few days ago.
I'll check. Both brothers. You have to get. You can have that. I have another one, I don't mind. Teachers. Because it, I blew a block.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Barbara, thank you. That's a Courtney move. Tripping over the wires. That would be me. Such a moment.
Make a motion to return to regular order of business, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Before we get back, thank you, everybody on our side negotiating. I know you all put in long hours and appreciate your effort on behalf of the committee. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Should we go back to regular order of business? Back to the originally, because we have Julie Gage. Do we need a vote on that?
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
We did. We're all in favor, yeah.
Gotcha. All right, so we, next on the agenda is community partner update. Boys and Girls Club Executive Director, Julie Gage.
There you go.
No, that's good. They'll take over the chair in a moment.
So just background, you know, we have a longstanding partnership with the Boys and Girls Club and try annually to bring community partners to one of the school committee meetings. It resonated for this meeting in light of the fact that over the past few weeks, the club stepped up to help families, you know, during, when we were not in school. They did the same thing during COVID. I mean, it's, the partnership is alive and well, and I think we benefit a lot from having this ongoing relationship with the club and all of the things that you do for our kids after school but before school and everything else. So with that said, Julie's, Julie's here. With Allison, so thank you.
Well, thanks for having us. I'm Julie Gage. I'm the executive director, and Allison McDaniel here is our 21st Century After the Bell and Before the Bell Program Director. So there's a million things we could talk about, but we just wanted to briefly highlight on a couple of things, first being our 21st Century Learning Center programs, and second, our Before the Bell programs. Those are our programs that are really true partnerships with the district and we thought would be most relevant to discuss tonight. And so some of you have heard this before, but we have a couple of new programs in the community over the past few years that I don't think that we've talked about. So 21st Century Learning Centers are a program through the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, a grant-funded program all across the Commonwealth. In some cases, cities and towns and school districts hold the, hold the grant contract with the Department of Ed, and in some cases, community-based organizations hold the contract with DESI. And we're fortunate here in Woburn, we have both, so that's pretty exciting. Allison's been directing the program at the Shamrock for many, many years. We have to be at least on our fifth grant cycle at this point. So at the Shamrock School, we have the program. We're in year two of a three-year grant. The Malcolm White, you probably recall, that program is in year two of its grant cycle. And so the city of Woburn, the Woburn Public Schools holds a contract with DESI for that. Allison and I, along with some other community partners, worked together with Woburn Public Schools to write that grant. And so while we aren't administering the program on a daily basis, Allison does serve as a mentor for that program, and we help with Mr. Nickerson and his staff with a lot of the data collection, data analysis, program design, all of those sort of things throughout the, throughout the year. And new, this year, we reapplied and were funded for a program at the Altavesta School, which has been a great, a great asset up there. Dr. Riley reached out to us last school year and said, what do you think? And I think we kind of at first said, do we have the capacity? Can we do, can we do it? Will they, will they have, will DESI have an appetite for a third program in the city? And I think it speaks a lot to how both of the program at the Malcolm White and at the Shamrock, and the partnership that the club and the Woburn Public Schools has, that they did want to, that they did want to send in, send funding to our community for a third, third program. So we're really excited. It's been great. Participation is a little low there. So, 21st Century Learning Centers are a program through the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're grant-funded programs all across the Commonwealth. In some cases, cities and towns and school districts hold the, hold the grant contract with the Department of Ed and in some cases, community-based organizations hold the contract with DESI. And we're fortunate here in Woburn, we have both. So, that's pretty exciting. Allison's been directing the program at the Shamrock for many, many years. We have to be at least on our fifth grant cycle at this point. So, at the Shamrock School, we have the program. We're in year two of a three-year grant. The Malcolm White, you probably recall, that program is in year two of its grant cycle. And so, the city of Woburn, the Woburn Public Schools holds a contract with DESI for that. Allison and I, along with some other community partners, worked together with Woburn Public Schools to write that grant. And so, while we aren't administering the program on a daily basis, Allison does serve as a mentor for that program. And we help with Mr. Nickerson and his staff with a lot of the data collection, data analysis, program design, all those sort of things throughout the, throughout the year. And new, this year, we reapplied and were funded for a program at the Altavesta School, which has been a great, a great asset up there. Dr. Riley reached out to us last school year and said, what do you think? And I think we kind of at first said, ah. Do we have the capacity? Can we do, can we do it? Will they, will they have, will DESI have an appetite for a third program in the city? And I think it speaks a lot to how both of the program at the Malcolm White and at the Shamrock and the partnership that the club and the Woburn Public Schools has, that they did want to, that they did want to send in, send funding to our community for a third, third program. So, we're really excited. It's been great. Participation is a little low there. We have some barriers to get over, but we do have over 50 students enrolled. And we just definitely want to, in addition to the staff at the other schools, I think at the Altavesta School, they've been really welcoming, so much so that Dr. Riley and her teachers and staff even have a spreadsheet where they can help share information with our staff about what certain classes might be working on so that we have an idea of what students need assistance with in the afternoons and sort of teachers going in on their own time. Helping us know what the kids need the most because we are not there during the school day. And so, just the communication has just been awesome. And that's really what makes or breaks a program. And so, something that we're really proud of. And Allison's just going to talk a little bit about, because in the city of Woburn, we have this awesome 21st Century Learning Center funding, a new opportunity that we started last summer and we just got good news about this summer.
So, last summer, we were, had an opportunity to pilot an internship program for 10 high school students to work in our team summer program. We were successful without much guidance from DESI, but we managed to pull it through. And they invited us to apply again this year. So, we were able to successfully get double the money we got last year. We will be able to have 15 high school interns working with us this summer. And five high school interns can start this spring. So, we can onboard them this spring, get them used to some of our programming and then work with us over the summer. So, we're excited about that.
Yeah, it's great. And we're really trying to target like a diverse population of students, particularly students who might be interested in going into education. So, hopefully, we can spark their interest in education and working with young people. And then hopefully, eventually, they'll come back to Woburn and want to become, become part of the Woburn Public Schools. So, I think we'll move forward and talk about before school a little bit. And so, this program is a partnership really between the elementary schools and Woburn Memorial High School and the club. Super unique. When I like go to a donor, this is like the first thing that I tell them about because it's just like a creme de la creme in our community, I think, when it comes to out of school time. But Woburn High School has a class called PE Leadership. It's taught by Mr. Lapon. These are some of his fine students. We're going to turn it over to them in a minute. And so, that happens first period every day. And these awesome young women and their, and their comrades attend either the Shamrock School or the Malcolm White School in the morning. They spend first period with the younger students. So, for the first part of the semester, they're learning how to put a lesson plan together, learning how to work with young people, learning strategies to get kids' attention, these different things. And then, these guys plan the lessons every day. So, they do a different, the kids enjoy a different physical fitness activity every morning for the first half of the period. And the second half of the period, everybody sits down and has breakfast together. It's the most adorable thing you've ever seen. If you have a chance, please come early in the morning to the schools and see it because it's just, it's really great. Really big shout out to the cafeteria workers and the maintenance staff at those schools too, who are a big part of making that, making that happen and opening the cafeteria doors and the gymnasiums in the morning for us, earlier than, than normal. But it's just, it's a, it's such a great partnership to see the younger students looking out the windows, waiting for the high school kids to come in the morning. And it's really awesome. And I think both populations really get a lot, a lot out of it. So, I'm going to stand up and let these young ladies sit down and talk about their experience being in the PE leadership class and what it means to them. Don't forget to introduce yourself.
I'm Molly Byrne. I'm a senior at Woburn High. And my first time taking PE leadership was first semester of my junior year, so last year. And I bonded with a lot of the kids pretty quickly and ended up going to some of their baseball and basketball games. My brother was on a lot of their teams, so he became friends with them too because I knew them. And then, I, second semester, I was supposed to have open campus and I begged my guidance counselors to take it away so that I could go back to PE leadership. And eventually, they let me and Mr. Lapon let me. So, I went back and finished out the year with them. And then, we, we all went to their field day. So, we helped out for a majority of the day. That was our final for the class. And we got to meet all of the students, other friends and stuff. And that was probably my favorite memory so far. And then, first semester of my senior year, I had open campus again. And I begged them to take it away so that I could be in PE leadership again. And they, they finally let me. I rearranged my schedule. I was supposed to have a different class first semester, I mean, first period, second semester, and convinced them to let me stay in it again. So, now I'm in my fourth semester of PE leadership. And I've, my relationships with all the kids have bonded a lot. And I, I love spending time with them and I'd take the class again if I had another semester.
Hi, I'm Morgan Barmash. I'm also a senior at Woburn High. I've been in PE leadership for two years now. And my favorite part about it is making memorable relationships with the kids. And good or bad day, like I always love showing up and just seeing the smiles on their face when they feel successful in a game that we put together and we take the time to spend and learn the game too, so.
Hi, I'm Sophia Berksy.
No stranger.
And I've also been in PE leadership for two years. And I did it last year and I just fell in love with it. And I did it again this year. And just, I know like we're there to help students, but I think they also help us. It's just inspirational just seeing them like grow just right in front of us. And it inspired me too. I also work after the bell at the Shamrock because I loved it so much. And I think so many of these kids, they just thrive off having us there. They work their best. And, yeah, also, I would take it again if I could next year.
My name's Ever Hayden. I'm also a senior at Woburn High School. And I think my favorite part was just being able to help out the kids because even when they weren't having a good day or they don't have the best home life, they were always just so excited to spend time with someone else and just like learn from the older kids. And they always had someone special out of the older kids that they could go to when they weren't having the best day. And even for like my age kids, like all the seniors or the juniors, like if we weren't having a good day, there was always one of those little kids that would come running up to you with the biggest smile and they'd always just make your day so much better.
My name is Timo Swabni and this is my first year doing PE leadership. But, I mean, first period has never been something that I've liked going to. I, I think PE leadership really gave me a reason to want to go to school. Like whether I'm having a bad morning or a good morning, like I'd just go there. And like the first like five seconds of me sitting there, like all the kids like surrounding me and like filling like my environment with joy and positivity. It really just like, it was just such an incredible experience. I think I've had, I mean, I would do it again too. But, like I went like with Molly, I, no, Molly, but I went to some of their games because my brother also played and just like seeing them light up and they're like, did you see me score? Did you? And I'm like, oh, yeah, 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 which I didn't, but. And I told them like I ran her. And then like seeing them at like football games or hockey games and just the connections we built. And like my friends that do it, I know a lot of them want to go into like the education route, do like PE leadership. I think that encouraged them like a lot to go through that route. And I think it's just such a great career.
Excellent. I think you're all set. Yeah, we're going to ask a question. I didn't know if you had, I didn't know if you had a follow-up or anything. Alright, do we have any questions for either the leaders or the, or any of the people? They're all leaders.
So, I just, you're all just amazing. The way like you capture this experience, I feel like I was like picturing it in my head. Clearly, this is a meaningful program. And I'm just so happy for you that you got to participate in it. And I just love the win-win out of it. You know, like these kids have such a need coming out of COVID. They were still seeing, you know, mental health and social emotional needs. And here we are providing this kind of program, Julie. I'm just really impressed. And girls, congratulations on being part of something really fantastic. So, thank you for coming tonight, Jerry.
Excellent.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron. Good evening, ladies. Quickly, Julie, I see you're a great handout tonight. And one of the important things that strike me, and again, you know, being a little older club kid myself, very important to let the public know that these programs that you're running with these great leaders in all buildings, there is no fee to participate. I'm sure there's part of the grant. A lot of people probably unaware of that. Put into the factor as well. No fee for all these programs you're talking about, all the great leadership traits and skills that these young ladies and men are using later on in life. But I think the fact that the students are doing this before school, after school, and no fees to their families is wonderful. So, I want to thank you and the club administration for that as well. Obviously, thank the young leaders that take part in the program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brian. Ms. Lipsett.
I'll echo everyone else's thanks, both to Julie and Allison and to you all. You know, the services that you're providing is, is great. And I know that you're getting a lot out of it as well, which is, which is fantastic. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do want to ask, how many of you are at least even a little bit considering a career in education right now? Okay, that backfired. That backfired on me.
I'm undecided, so I'm not sure.
Okay, alright, I'll take that.
I'm working with kids. I want to be a pediatric nurse.
Okay, that's awesome. That is fantastic.
I want to be a pediatric nurse or like labor and delivery. So, something with kids, but.
That was great. Well, thank you so much.
Skoomia.
Thank you. Again, love this. Amazing. As myself, a current club kid. I was getting there. Pediatric nurse, hit me up. I love this. I love the activity. I love the breakfast. School lunch and school breakfast is like a hobby of mine, pushing that, making sure that kids are getting what they need to start their day. And we know, we know that first thing in the morning activity is so good for the kids coming into their day. How do we get this at other schools? What's next?
Well, the reason that it works so well at the Shamrock School and at the Malcolm White School is because of proximity to the Woburn Memorial High School. It would be nearly impossible for us to get the high school students to any other elementary school and back to school in time to have any meaningful amount of time with the kids at any other school, unfortunately. But we did start at the Shamrock and brought it to the Malcolm White. I think that this sort of piece of it, for us, the meaningful part is the high school students and the elementary school students working together. And really, because of geographic constraints, right now, these are the only two schools that it works at. Otherwise, we'd have to have two periods worth of time in order for them to be able to get there and back and have any meaningful time with the kids.
Good thing to have in the back of our minds, Justin. Thank you.
Dr. Wells.
Oh, I was just going to give Julie a chance to push her pot of gold tickets. I'm sure there's still a few available, so if you just want.
Sure are. As Mr. Warren mentioned, you know, a lot of these come out of our operating budget. The Before the Bell program is, is not grant-funded like the Alcatru programs that we mentioned are. So, we do have our St. Patrick's Day raffle and event coming up. So, we'd love to see everybody there or at least have your name in the bin, bgcuber.org to get all the information.
Colleen does not win every year.
I haven't won yet. The year is young. But you can't win if you're not in the bin.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Just, thank you. And I'm going to put you on the spot, maybe. Seniors, does anybody have a definitive plan for next year that you want to share? Or is it still up in the air?
I'm going to Kari. I'm going to play softball and majoring in nursing.
I'm going to McKendrick University in Illinois and I'm going to play lacrosse and study athletic training. And I'm going to UMass Lowell for nursing.
Great. Again, I don't want to put you on the spot. It's fine. So, grateful for your, your time with our kids. Thank you for coming.
Excellent. Great.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up is a vote. It'll be out of order. We got to go back in? A vote on the Woburn Memorial High School DECA field trip. So, if you've got a chance or you've had a chance to look at it here, it is March 9th, 2023.
I just have one question to the administration. I know they did a DECA field trip earlier in the year. Is it twice a year, three times a year? And do the other stu-, like the different students get to go or is it like one group? I'm not sure. It's like a competition, so they go to the first one?
I'd have to look back to find out where DECA went earlier this year. We just had Model U in and.
That would have been with the other chair. I wouldn't have known.
Well, the chair, the current chair should know. Farmer one certainly doesn't. No, that's not a big deal. I just, I just noticed that we had a bill for the DECA trip in December. And I've, is that like an all-encompassing DECA then? Maybe I'm misunderstanding. Like the acronym. Maybe that's a better thing. What's the acronym stand for?
Distributed Education.
But does it encompass a wide range of things? Maybe that, I guess that's the.
Yes. So, I would say the, the one that you approved earlier this year was more competition format. And this one is their, is the conference. I just had to double check between the two. So, they serve as pretty kind of different aspects of, of the club and organization.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. So, you'll reach out to whoever knows note. Excellent. Alright, next up are the reports. We have a finance subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met this evening just for our regular meeting. President, myself, Ms. Lipsett, Ms. Chizum, and then members of the administration. We reviewed the list of bills, found the list of bills to be in order, and I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills.
Second.
Okay. Have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We reviewed the balance of accounts. We discussed some of the accounts that are potentially over and we discussed how that will be reconciled in the end. But there's no need for any action at this point. I know. So, I make a motion to approve the balance of accounts.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All set.
We also had discussion regarding the expenditure of some ESAR funds for one, one-time expenditures. And Assistant Superintendent will give us an update for the committee. And we should vote on this because it's expending the ESAR account.
Sure. What we brought to the finance Subcommittee tonight was a variety of textbooks at the high school that need to be updated, mainly in the math and science department, ranging from financial algebra, environmental, AP environmental science, modern chemistry, anatomy and physiology, as well as some multi-year subscriptions to online platforms in the math department. Through our conversations regarding coming into the budget season, we discussed whether the ability to make these purchases now for the texts that we were going to need instead of them going into the general operating budget.
And maybe, Ms. Alkanaric, you know, after we expend this money, are there sufficient funds for this amount in the ESAR?
Yes, there's, there's more than sufficient funds in the ESAR account after we, after we purchase for this and certainly for FY '24.
I think we're talking about 250,000?
160,000.
160,000, okay. So, I'll make a motion that we extend the money as described.
Second. I'm sorry.
On the motion?
Question on the motion. The total amount is 160,000?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. A lot of, then primarily, the larger cost is into the multi-year subscriptions.
Okay.
So, being able to.
It didn't register. So, I appreciate the clarification. Okay, ready?
Alright, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Alright, so the finance Subcommittee, we're reminded that March 1st, we will get our first look at the budget. And we'll be setting up finance Subcommittee meetings to go over the budget. And so, we'll be talking to the full committee about setting up meetings. So, if other members want to participate in those meetings, we'll try to accommodate it.
Okay. Next up, the Communication Policy Subcommittee.
We have not met.
Not met, okay. Curriculum and Data Trends Subcommittee.
We have not met, but we're going to try to schedule something for right after February break.
Alright, Personnel Subcommittee.
We're meeting Friday.
Alright. Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee.
We have not met, but I'm looking at my Subcommittee people. And the feasibility study has returned. So, we have work to do. Buckle up.
Alright, Student Services and Achievement Subcommittee.
Have not met, plan to hopefully after vacation.
Alright. So, that's the reports. Next up, our correspondence. I mentioned earlier, the emails which are on file, the PE ones as well, the most recent ones. Appreciate that. I do have, not sure if it's part of this, but got a conflict on April 11th, hoping to push the meeting to April 12th. Anyone have a problem with that? I think this is where it goes.
Much.
So, April, yeah, April 11th. Cancel that, make it the 12th.
I can do that.
Everyone good?
Yep.
We got a majority. It doesn't matter.
Sorry. Sorry.
Good?
Yep.
Alright. Wednesday, the April 12th is the new date. I appreciate that. So, we got a vote on that or no?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Motion to move our April 11th meeting to April 12th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Alright, thank you very much for that. Future Agenda Items. Future agenda items.
Calendar.
Calendar, okay.
School calendar.
School calendar.
That'll be in the March 1st meeting?
Yeah, we'll do that coming up. All right, anything else, future agenda items? We do have, I know John's been asking about the snapshots.
Yeah, I was just going to bring that up, but I figured.
No, I got it, I got my little note. So maybe for the next agenda, we can try to have something on that.
It's like a recurring item, that's the idea.
There it is, I know, I know. And some other stuff going on. All right, anything else for future agenda items? All right, executive session, excuse me, was already done, I don't think we need a, an additional one, I think we're good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Adjourn. All in favor?